Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome to the December 3, 2018, Bryan City Council Meeting. First on the agenda this evening are the approval of the minutes from the November 5, 2018 Council Meeting. Council, you have those in front of you.
I'd move to approve, second.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next is Hearing of Public Concerns. Next on the agenda is the Clerk Treasurers' Report. Lori?
Counsel was presented at the Clerk Treasurers' Report for the month ending October 31, 2018.
I'd move to approve.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes. Okay, Lori, here we go. We've got a lot to do tonight. All right? Next is a resolution. Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 27, 2018. A resolution providing for the establishment of new funds. This is a request from Director of Utilities Maintenance and the Board of Public Affairs to establish two funds. The first for the Water Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, Fund Number 525, and the second for the Communications Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, Fund Number 535.
I'd move to suspend.
Second.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yep.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes. Next is an ordinance. Lori, number and read, please.
Ordinance number 43, 2018. An ordinance providing for new appropriations for the City of Bryan for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2018, and declaring an emergency. This is a request for operating supplies for the Gemma Fund Park and Recreation Department of $2,920 for monies being donated. It's also a request from the Board of Public Affairs and Director of Utilities Maintenance or Director of Utilities Maintenance to transfer $125,858 to the Communication Reserve Fund and the 509 Communications Fund. Total amount of appropriation requested, $128,778.
Move to suspend.
I'll second. John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt.
Second.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes. Next on the agenda is an ordinance. Lori, would you number and read, please?
Ordinance number 44, 2018. An ordinance providing for the transfer of funds for the City of Bryan for the month ending December 31, 2018. This is a transfer request of $750,000 from the 1% General Income Tax Fund to the 101 General Fund. A transfer of $80,000 from the 1% Income Tax Fund to the 203 Motor Vehicle Street Fund. A transfer of $400,000 from the 1/2% Income Tax Fund to the 401 Capital Improvement Fund for capital projects. A transfer of $50,000 from the 1/2% Income Tax Fund to the 505 Sewer Drain Maintenance Fund for maintenance projects. A transfer of $150,000 from the 502 Water Fund to the 525 Water Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, and this goes along with that request from the Board of Public Affairs to establish. And a transfer of $125,858 from the Communications Fund to the Communications Capital Improvement Reserve Fund, also as the Board of Public Affairs requested.
Lynn?
Yes.
Total amount of transfers requested, $1,555,858.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. I have three more, so.
I'll move to suspend. Whenever you're ready.
Well, Lori's got to number and read.
Okay. Lori?
Ordinance number 46, 2018.
I'll second.
An ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to issue change order number one for the
Mary?
project known as 2018 asphalt program.
Yes.
Well, one project give us another one, take us.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
We have an $8,319.23 add.
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
I don't think that's too bad on a $630,000 project, considering laying asphalt an inch
Yes. Next is another ordinance. Lori, would you number and read, please?
and a half thick.
Ordinance number 45, 2018.
If you're off a sixteenth of an inch, it makes a huge difference.
An ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to issue change order number one and firm
So I feel good with that. I request you suspend the rules and authorize this add to the project.
for the project known as 2018 pavement marking program.
Any questions, counsel? Mr. Wieland.
I'll move to suspend.
How are you doing tonight?
I'll second. John?
I've got four items here.
Yes.
Mary?
I'll try and go through them pretty quick.
Yes.
First one, pavement marking program.
Lynn?
Yes.
We have a $14,848.96 deduct.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
I'll move to adopt.
We had left the High Street striping still in the bid.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
It's still passed the reflectivity test, so we did not need to stripe it this year.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
So it's just easier to leave in the bid documents.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
And if we need it, fine.
Judy?
If we don't, we take the money back.
Yes.
So we'll take the money back and save it for next year.
Next is another ordinance. Lori, would you number and read, please?
So I request you suspend the rules, and we'll close this out.
Ordinance number 45, 2018.
I'd move to suspend.
An ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to issue change order number one for the
Second.
Lynn?
project known as 2018 pavement marking program.
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mr. Wieland.
Mary?
How are you doing tonight?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
I've got four items here.
Judy?
Yes.
I'll try and go through them pretty quick.
Move to adopt.
First one, pavement marking program.
I'll second. John?
We have a $14,848.96 deduct.
Yes.
Mary?
We had left the High Street striping still in the bid. It's still passed the reflectivity test, so we did not need to stripe it this year. So it's just easier to leave in the bid documents. And if we need it, fine. If we don't, we take the money back. So we'll take the money back and save it for next year. So I request you suspend the rules, and we'll close this out.
I'd move to suspend.
Second.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you. I have three more, so.
Whenever you're ready.
Well, Lori's got to number and read.
Okay. Lori?
Ordinance number 46, 2018. An ordinance authorizing the Clerk Treasurer to issue change order number one for the project known as 2018 asphalt program.
Well, one project give us another one, take us. We have an $8,319.23 add. I don't think that's too bad on a $630,000 project, considering laying asphalt an inch and a half thick. If you're off a sixteenth of an inch, it makes a huge difference. So I feel good with that. I request you suspend the rules and authorize this add to the project.
Any questions, counsel?
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second. John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes. Lori?
Ordinance number 47, 2018. An ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract with Bryan Excavating LLC for the project known as 2018 detention basin enlargement for Bryan Industrial and Commercial Complex.
Well, we've talked about this several times. This is the South Industrial Park. We're expanding the stormwater retention basin to give us a little more volume down there. Bids range from $218,000 to $469,000. Pretty big difference in the bids, but I'm confident that Bryan Excavating LLC will do a fine job. They'd done our last retention basin for us, and their bid on that one was substantially lower than the other ones as well. So apparently, they can move dirt cheaper than everyone else. So with that, I request you suspend the rules and authorize this project to proceed.
Is this taking care of an issue, or?
Yeah, we have. There's a couple items out there. When the addition to the industrial park was done in '04 era, the retention basin was never expanded because they didn't feel it was necessary at that point in time. But the sites are being developed more as far as percentage-wise. They should only develop maybe 75 to 80 percent of them, but they're developing most of them with building and asphalt footprint. So what it does is it creates more stormwater runoff. And actually, the high water elevation in the retention basin was a little bit higher than the truck docks that Allied molded. So when the retention basin was full, there'd be water in the truck docks. So we're correcting that situation there and making it larger and shallower.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
I'll second. John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes. Lori?
Resolution number 28, 2018. A resolution approving the community reinvestment area tax exemption application submitted by Orchard Grove Properties.
Orchard Grove Properties is also known as Davlins Corporation. They are planning, according to their letter, a $1.525 million expansion. Includes building site work. With that, it qualifies them as long as the valuation is over $1 million at a 10-year tax abatement. Actually, it's $500,000 is the cutoff for that, so it shouldn't be a problem. But we're asking for a 10-year, 100% tax abatement on the improvements that they have, and all the supporting documentation is with that. So we had a Site Development Plan Review Meeting this morning, or this afternoon, actually, with the Planning Commission. Everything passed fine there, so they will be ready to proceed as soon as weather allows.
I'd move to suspend.
I'll second.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is another resolution. Lori?
Resolution number 29, 2018. A resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Bryan to apply for a grant for the City of Bryan.
Oh, it's my turn. The cemetery grant program is actually new within the state of Ohio. They've reserved about $200,000 to be spread out by applicants. They don't anticipate a lot of money, but we do have a couple items to address in the cemetery. So I was hoping with your approval, once they got all of the qualifications out, if I found that it was a good move for the city to try to get a few dollars towards the cemetery.
Was there any kind of, this is the?
State.
No, the actual cemetery itself, the fountain?
Yeah, the Fountain Grove is under the operation of the Street Department.
Yeah. So is there anything like asphalt-ing more, cutting down trees, building a moat so Allied doesn't get flooded, those kind of things?
Well, I guess pending budget, we're going to try to put some cemetery niches in to hold places for urns.
Ah, I see.
And that has gone through the Budget Committee, but it hasn't gone to you guys yet until your next or last meeting in December. And then the other thing is just, we are in charge of the burial for anyone indigent within the city limits, and so maybe it would help with that as well.
Well, the reason I'm asking is because there has been, and not just from me, I see our superintendent out there a lot or whatever, but there's been a number of people asked if there was any possibility of putting water. So you know what I mean, like water spigots? And that's why I was asking, is there money available for water spigots? Because right now, and this is, my son is buried there. We have plots there. I want to be very upfront. It is not about, I see a lot of people out there, do I not? They stop and see me, and we chit chat. And there's been enough, over the last, probably on and off the last 11 years, but the last two years, there's been a lot more growth out there. That'd be going like east, right? And a number of people have asked, is there any way we can get water here besides, I think the, is the only one that pump? Is that the nearest, where you pump the water?
Bryan, I don't know if that pump.
Well, it worked this last spring, but their point, I thought, was a valid one, and so I thought I'd just bring it up. If that's a possibility, and it kind of fits, and there's money available, and it makes some sense, great. I'm not pushing for it, just saying, I've heard that.
And in all honesty, I'm not sure because of our separation with utilities. I'd probably have to have Kevin look over the grant if it were to be used for water.
Sure. Look it over, Kevin.
And I'd like the opportunity to talk to my commissioner.
Oh, no question.
Because obviously, we have not discussed that issue.
Yeah, yeah. I did not bring it up for any embarrassment to anyone as much as just, if this got out, people would want, a number of folks would wonder why I didn't at least bring up that as a possibility. So there you go.
That's the thing I'm wondering about that. Do you have any problem with cameras?
My biggest question so far is how do we?
Turning that spigot on and just leaving it run?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because anyone?
That's what would happen.
But you could just, you could just give the key to me.
Well, if you would like to be a groundskeeper, we'll take the recognition.
Saying how, saying how there's no conflict of interest, just give me the key, all's well. No, I think that is a good point. I think that is a good point because, not intentionally so much, and I don't know if there's vandalism out there. I can attest to theft. I probably lost well over $1,000 worth of flowers, well over, not to mention pots. So there's theft. Certainly, Mr. Engstrom could address more the vandalism issue, but I'm not aware of that as much as I am the theft. But that's something, just something to think about, if it can be brought up in a discussion, and if it's possible, that's great. And I was kidding about giving me the key. I have no interest.
All right, we can talk about it at our next Department Head Meeting.
Thank you.
Kevin also joins us for those. Sound good? Okay.
Is a cemetery that is maintained by a city, is that an anomaly, or is that, are there a lot of them out there? I'm just thinking, $200,000 isn't a lot of money when you're talking state.
Oh, no. I think it was their way of saying, we're sorry, we passed a bill in the middle of the night we didn't talk to you about first, to be honest. I mean, that's.
So don't get excited.
No, no. It's just any little bit helps, so when I was, it was brought to my attention, I thought I would ask, just in case it does pan out, so we don't run into any issues of you guys not knowing. With that being said, it's not an anomaly. I think defined zones, too, if not.
All the women's churches, the church cemeteries are owned by municipalities or whatever.
Or townships.
Oh, okay. So these are around here.
Mm-hmm.
So you're up against a lot of people.
Yeah. There's, yeah, there's no promise we're going to get anything. I just, it was brought to my attention, it was available, so I thought I would ask to apply.
Sure. Thanks for applying.
I move to suspend.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Move to adopt.
Yes.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Judy.
It was John and then second by Lynn.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes. Next on the agenda is another resolution. Lori, would you please number and read?
Resolution number 30, 2018. A resolution authorizing the fire chief of the City of Bryan to apply for grants for the City of Bryan Fire Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This resolution is in regards to grants that we will apply for next year with your approval. This is our standard list of areas that we apply for grants for. So I would ask that you just suspend the rules, and starting next year, when they come out, we'll get started and apply them for them.
I move to suspend. Second.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like three more.
Yeah.
Next is an ordinance. Lori, would you number and read, please?
Ordinance number 48, 2018. An ordinance drops the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for 2019 to Jefferson Township.
This is our annual fire protection contract ordinance. You should also have a copy of the contract itself.
Yep.
Or it'll be coming down the line here in the next little bit for Jefferson Township for 2019.
Move to suspend.
Second.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes. Next is your number and read.
Ordinance number 49, 2018. An ordinance to authorize the mayor to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for 2019 to Pulaski Township.
So not to sound like a broken record, but same thing except for Pulaski Township for next year. I'll move to suspend.
I'll second. Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Move to adopt. Second.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Gee, I wanted to tell you, in our packet was the letter that you got from the Napoleon Fire Department, and it was very complimentary of our fire department. And I wanted to bring that up tonight and say congratulations.
Thank you.
I thought that was nice.
Thank you.
That's what we're here for. We're here to help.
Next.
Building permits.
Yes.
I have two building permits. I assume we can do them both with one motion.
Yes, please.
I have Peters Family Eye Care. They're doing approximately $600,000 worth of remodeling to the building behind Subway. We came prior to this for a CRA application a few meetings ago. And also, I have a building permit for Parkview Health on West High Street. They're remodeling about 2,500 square feet inside the facility. Not 100% sure where, but there's just a couple small areas in there. They're doing some remodeling, and they're still working out a to-be-determined construction cost because they're still working on bidding. But when they get the actual cost, then we'll be able to charge them. We anticipate that this week. So with that, I request you approve both building permits for Peters and for Parkview Health.
I'll move to adopt.
I'll second.
Go ahead, Mary.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
All right, thank you very much, and I will hand these to. President, pass them down later.
Thank you.
Thank you. Brian?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Next, Mayor, you're on the agenda next.
Yes, I am requesting to hire for part-time help.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next is another ordinance. Lori, would you number and read, please?
Orderance number eighteen, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for two thousand nineteen to Pulaski Township. This is not your current one.
Max, not your current one. We'll move on to number nineteen on your agenda. Mayor?
Yes, I would ask that council approve Cindy Reed from the Ohio Gas Company for our BI-PAC, which is Bryan Industrial Park Committee. That is set up with specific people, and with the retirement of Dick Hallic last year, we had not had a meeting until recently, and I realized that our Ohio Gas Representative had retired. So Cindy has filled his place in the company, and I ask that you appoint her to our BI-PAC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next is another ordinance. Lori, would you number and read, please?
Orderance number twenty, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for two thousand nineteen to Pulaski Township. This is not your current one. We're not here to discuss that. So I'm just, I'm confident that Bryan Excavating LLC will do a fine job. They'd done our last retention basin for us, and their bid on that one was substantially lower than the other ones as well, so apparently they can move dirt cheaper than everyone else. So with that, I request you suspend the rules and authorize this project to proceed.
Is this taking care of an issue, or...
Yeah, we have, there's a couple items out there. When the addition to the industrial park was done in 'oh four era, the retention basin was never expanded because they didn't feel it was necessary at that point in time. But the sites are being developed more as far as percentage-wise. They should only develop maybe seventy-five to eighty percent of them, but they're developing most of them with building and asphalt footprint. So what it does is it creates more stormwater runoff, and actually, the high water elevation in the retention basin was a little bit higher than the truck docks that Ally molded. So when the retention basin was full, there'd be water in the truck docks. So we're correcting that situation there and making it larger and shallower.
I'll move to suspend.
I'll second.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next is the Parks Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In your packets, you received a letter from Ben requesting a thirty-day hire for Dennis Fox, and I'm here to request your approval for the thirty-day hire.
What kind of things are we going to do?
He's been working planting trees and in the greenhouse and just helping court tidy up the last-minute fall items.
I move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next is the Parks Department.
Good evening.
Good evening.
In your packets, you received a letter from Ben requesting a thirty-day hire for Dennis Fox, and I'm here to request your approval for the thirty-day hire.
What kind of things are we going to do?
He's been working planting trees and in the greenhouse and just helping court tidy up the last-minute fall items.
I move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eighteen on your agenda, council, has been omitted and has been removed for this evening. We'll move on to...
Max, not your current one.
We'll move on to number nineteen on your agenda. Mayor?
Yes, I would ask that council approve Cindy Reed from the Ohio Gas Company for our BI-PAC, which is Bryan Industrial Park Committee. That is set up with specific people, and with the retirement of Dick Hallic last year, we had not had a meeting until recently, and I realized that our Ohio Gas Representative had retired. So Cindy has filled his place in the company, and I ask that you appoint her to our BI-PAC.
Move to approve.
Second.
Lynn?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Next is another ordinance. Lori, would you number and read, please?
Orderance number forty-eight, two thousand eighteen. An ordinance authorizing the clerk treasurer to enter into contracts on behalf of the Bryan Fire Department for mutual aid or fire protection services for two thousand nineteen to Pulaski Township.
Yes, council, as you're aware, or most of you will be, we always have a special meeting late in December to approve the budget, rehire the city attorney, and any miscellaneous things that would need to be addressed. So I am asking that I get a motion for a special meeting for December twenty-seventh at noon here in council chambers, and that will be our last official meeting of the two thousand eighteen year. We will have the third Monday of the month in December still, but this is an extra.
Move to approve.
Second.
Rick?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Okay, that's everything on the agenda. We will now go around the room. Nothing?
Thank you.
Did he hear any papers?
Just like to say that, happy to hear that Davlins expanded. I think that's really good for our community. It's good for a local business. I think it's encouraging when we continue to see growth, and I'm excited for them, and I hope it brings additional employees soon. That's it.
Yes.
Just to kind of add to that, as was indicated in the paper tonight, fairly happy with that expansion, but extremely happy with the collaboration and cooperation that took place between them and our city engineer and his office, which made a lot of this, I don't know about possible, but I will say much easier to proceed with whenever you get grants that pick up a portion of that. So kudos to the city of Bryan and to Bryan and his staff for going forward with that. Also, just what happened tonight, you know, we have a couple grant issues going on. City Council, will you approve us for looking into grants? I know we need to do it on a formality basis, and I think that's great, and we will continue to follow such protocol. However, quite frankly, you can put me down as always voting in favor of that without hesitation, because I think it is a valuable resource for Bryan. The last thing I have is very encouraged, I have been the last number of months, by the downtown development situation that's going on, been reported by the paper, the mayor and Andy Waterson and BMU and actually, most of the public affairs folks have been involved in soliciting ideas for downtown development growth and listening to ideas, and it's been very encouraging working with the group that we're working with. I think they are full of energy and full of creative ideas, and I'm encouraged by that because that's one of the things I would hope that I would be a part of, and that is a more progressive Bryan, a more business development Bryan, and I see that happening, and I want to thank the mayor for that, Kevin and the chamber for those steps that I think have been very encouraging to me. I'm four generations Bryan, and I've felt as though that was a major focus of mine, not an agenda item, but a major focus to see if I couldn't be a part of and help in some way that. And I have probably been of very little help, but am certainly willing, able to support those endeavors because I think it's crucial. You're either moving forward, or, not to be dramatic, or you're moving backward, and I just assume move forward. So thank you to all the folks that have made that happen. I'm done.
Next Monday night, Kiwanis Christmas for Kids is going to be shopping at Walmart at five thirty. We have close to four hundred families to shop for, and that's a lot for the Kiwanis to take on. So I'm opening up that anyone in the community or anyone sitting out there, if you want to come help us shop, we shop at Walmart at five thirty. You don't have to be there at five thirty. You can show up any between five thirty and seven thirty, eight o'clock, we'll still be there shopping because we usually shop up until nine o'clock. So if anyone needs something to do next Monday night, we can use some shoppers. This is for Williams County families.
Well, what I was going to say is they aren't paying for this.
No, no, no.
The money's been raised.
No, you do not have... No, there's no...
I mean, you can.
You're going to spend the money that next ninety-eight point one of Kiwanis has raised, so...
Well, some people might have a question.
Yeah, no, there's no, no. It's all money raised in Williams County.
Mr. Hope.
I just want to echo Lynn's congratulations and thank you to Davlins for continuing to grow and to continue to help Bryan in employing people and being a very viable business here in town. And the other thing that I would like to mention, just kind of again echoing Mr. Betts, is, you know, we've got some people coming in that are taking a look at Bryan through new eyes, and I think that that's always good. When I was growing up, this was the hub, and everybody came to Bryan to do their business and to shop and to do things like that. I still feel that Bryan is that way, but we want to make the downtown the hub, and we're going to continue to grow, and I'm excited for the future of Bryan.
Lauren?
Yeah.
Rhonda?
Yeah.
Mayor?
Sure. The DART process has been fun. It's been a little stressful, but we are really excited. I think it's a good team that's working together, just to make sure Bryan keeps moving forward and we don't go stagnant and to improve any way we can. I would certainly like to thank Dr. and Diane Peters and then also Davlins and Parkview on their expansion. I'm just, to be honest, when you come in and you work every day with a great team, it's fun to come to work, and everybody in the city is looking to be partners with these businesses and make sure that the tools that they have are ready and available to them. And if they need an extra meeting to answer, you know, small or big questions, we're always ready and willing to do that, and so I applaud everyone at the city that has been a part of all those conversations, and I certainly think the business owners that are investing in the Bryan community because without them, you know, we hurt. So I appreciate that, and that's all I have for tonight.
I just would ditto everything that has been said up here this evening. I also am encouraged by the things at the DART meeting that we had. I'm very encouraged with the building permits. I'm encouraged to see that Bryan is moving forward, and that's a good sign, and we thank the citizens of Bryan for that, too. With that, I will like a motion to adjourn.
So we...
Second.
John?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Judy?
Yes.
Thank you all for coming.
And before you guys get up, I need your signature.